Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting. I want to thank everyone for being here. We'll start with the invocation by Pastor Smith, Chief Gary Smith. If you'd be so kind...
Good evening, Mayor's Council. Let's go to the Lord. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, and Lord God, I pray especially that you will watch over this council and the decisions that they make. I pray especially for all of the employees within this wonderful city. And Lord God, more importantly than that, I just pray that we once again can become one nation under God. We pray all these things in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
...of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call... Right here.
Here?
Here.
Here.
Okay, before we get started, I do want to point out, if you didn't get a copy of the agenda this evening, then you can pick one up in the corner back here. Right at the top of that agenda, I'd like to point out the procedure or meeting procedures, and I'll just quickly read it. It says, "The public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. Recognized by the mayor, please state your name and address, and limit remarks to three minutes, or less. Out of respect to the city employees, we request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or mayor. Any individual in violation will be declared out of order." We'll go ahead and get this thing started tonight. I would also let you know that there is a current copy of the Meeting Act of Nebraska. It is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. We'll go ahead and start with a consent agenda. Item number one is approved minutes of regular meeting on June 21st and work session on June 28th, 2016. Item number two, place on file ML&amp;W reports for May 2016. Item number three, approve mayor's appointment of Kendall Burns to the Library Advisory Board to replace Audra West. And item number four, approve one-year renewal of the near local agreement with Lincoln County for providing services and fuel to the Lincoln County Roads Department and authorize the mayor to sign documents for the city.
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
That motion passes. All right, on the regular agenda, item number five, this will be the third reading and action of adopt ordinance number 3945 annexing Lot 3 of Calvary First Subdivision, a part of the northeast one-fourth section 17, Township 13 North, Range 30 West of the 6 p.m., Lincoln County, Nebraska.
An ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, including within the corporate limits of the City of North Platte, Lot 3 of Calvary First Subdivision, a part of the northeast quarter of Section 17, Township 13 North, Range 30 West of the 6 p.m., Lincoln County, Nebraska. Repealing all ordinances and conflict herewith, providing for the effective date of publication thereof.
Move that we adopt ordinance number 3945 annexing Lot 3 of Calvary First Subdivision, a part of the northeast quarter of Section 17, Township 13 North, Range 30 West of the 6 p.m., Lincoln County, Nebraska.
That motion passes. Item number six, third reading and action of adopt ordinance number 3948 to rezone certain property from the A-1 Transitional Agricultural District to a B-2 Highway Commercial District located at 4520 South Buffalo, on property in the southeast one-fourth of Section 18, Township 13 North, Range 30 West of the 6 p.m., Lincoln County, Nebraska.
An ordinance of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, rezoning attractive land located in part of Track B Correction and Major's replat in the east one-half of Section 18 Township 13 North, Range 30 West of the 6 p.m., Lincoln County, Nebraska, for May 1 Transitional Agricultural District to B-2 Highway Commercial District. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances and conflict herewith, providing for the effective date of publication thereof.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 3948 to rezone certain property from an A-1 Transitional Agricultural District to a B-2 Highway Commercial District, located at 4520 South Buffalo, on property in the southeast quarter of Section 18 Township 13 North, Range 30 West of the 6 p.m., Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second, I approve.
Mr. Mayor, could I speak to that just for a minute?
Yes, please.
For three minutes. Okay. I went out to that site a week ago Saturday, and I went back Monday, and I went back Tuesday. And while I was out there Saturday, I talked to a fellow that lives out there just across the street from where this site will be located, and asked him what his opinion of that was, and he said, "I don't have a problem at all." He said, "I think it'd be a good thing, a good addition to our neighborhood." And he's lived right across where you'll be looking, right over that way, just on the other side of that little short cornfield over there. I also called both Broken Bow and Carney about their microbreweries. And in visiting with the city administrator and another lady, they had nothing but good things to say about the microbrewery in Broken Bow. I asked about the noise and the odors, because that's some of the things that we've heard here that it's going to be noisy and that we have lots of odors. And they said, "No problem at all." In fact, they said they had nothing but good comments on it right from the get-go. They stressed that the microbreweries were not bars, but tasting establishments, more on the dender level, and I quote. They said that if anyone had questions, they'd be glad to visit with them anytime, and I have their telephone number. And then I called Carney, and I talked to Roger Jasnoch, and a lot of you know Roger from being here. And he said they were very pleased with both their microbreweries. I think they've got two down there. And he said, again, "No problems at all." And then, when I was talking to Brett at Broken Bow, he informed me that they were putting in, I think Taylor has a microbrewery, and Ord is putting it in, or vice versa. And then this afternoon, a fellow called me, and he was all in favor of it, and he said his folks live, I believe it was Atkinson, and they're putting in a microbrewery. So it's not a, you know, it's a coming thing. I've had several phone calls. They were all in support. I think I had one phone call that was against it. But I also have 53 letters in favor of it here. If you want me to, I'll read them, will you? Okay?
I would have hoped that everybody here had an opportunity to read those. And if you haven't, I'm certain, I'm certain that we can take a little time if you choose to read your calls. I think everybody got those. I should add on to that, and sorry Glenn, but I should add, about five minutes before this meeting, I got another email. I don't even tell you who it was. It's Mount McNamee from the PCEO of the hospital. I just received a email from him as well, in support of this as well. So, yeah, there is, there's a number of them here that is supportive, and I would like to address maybe one or two, if they're in the room, I don't know, that were opposed to it. So, but I do have, if anybody would like to add on to what... And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, you're fine. You're fine.
If there's anyone else that wanted to say anything, I'm certainly open. Yes, sir.
You know, what we're looking at here is rezoning the land, and zoning-wise, in the couple negative phone calls, or the, I think there was one against email, two maybe, I don't remember, emails, not one of them brought up an issue to me that stops it zoning-wise. To me, it comes across zoning-wise, this makes perfect sense for North Platte. This is where we need to grow, you know, we need to add, and we need to encourage local people from this area to actually want to invest in our community, and want to make our, add something to our community, something they think that might be valuable. And, uh, and I think it is, you know, it's imperative, in my opinion, to try to support local people who are doing this. You know, I said it at the planning commission meeting. It's nice when we have local people willing to do this on their own. They're not asking us for money. They're just asking us, "Can we use this piece of land?" Just sits just outside the city of North Platte, but yet we have to, it's within two miles, so we have to make the decision, not the county. It's nice when we don't have to sit there and say, "Hey, Gary over at the Chamber and DEFCO, what kind of businesses can you bring us?" It's nice when the local people can start to bring up and build their own businesses here in North Platte. So, I don't see anything zoning-wise that says that we can deny this.
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker?
Apparently, I received all the opposite phone calls that you and Glenn got, because I only had one in favor of this change in the past month and a half, and I was a local banker. The rest of the phone calls I all received were people outside the 300-foot radius and also within the 300-foot radius that are opposed to this change. At the last meeting, I brought two letters from two families that were, live inside the 300-foot radius. And I have a third with me tonight, if anybody wants to read them, or I can read them. I mean, the first two, you guys all got two weeks ago. And I said, the third one, I went to make copies, and my copy machine decided to be a pain. So, and I've been criticized the past month about not having an opinion regarding this. And my only opinion on this is, I'm listening to what I'm getting, the phone calls that are coming into me, and also the use of the land. I have nothing wrong with businesses. I've never been against a business coming to North Platte. I'm not sure if this is the right type of business for this location, or if this business would best be suited at another location, either within the sea limits or within two-mile jurisdiction, personally. Just due to, not just the business, but the infrastructure out there pertaining to what this business is wanting to do with being a four-state distributor, or three-state distributor. There is no shoulders on Walker, on State Farm, or on Buffalo for the straight trucks and semis to be going up and down, bringing in materials, hauling materials out, taking out their product, bringing it back empty straight trucks, whatever, so be it. And there's been no discussion regarding their storm runoff or their wastewater runoff with the fact that they're going to be using elevation on their property to bring their building up. I don't remember exactly how many inches he said. It was 12 or 18. It sounded like the last time we asked. And there was no discussion of what that's going to do to everything lowline, because if I remember right, we're still having an issue with the floodplain out there due to Fremont and all that stuff, correct? There's it out of the floodplain now. Okay, so it is out of the floodplain. But we're still having an issue with that creek right there, that freshwater creek. And I don't want, not seeing you guys would, I just don't want any of the wastewater contaminating that creek. So, and that hasn't been brought up. So, that's kind of where I stand with this.
When do we get to talk?
If you, please, let me do this real quick. I see there's a number of people in the audience. Would you just raise your hand if you're in approval of this site for this, can you just, for approval? Okay, thank you very much. People in the audience that disapprove this area? Okay, thank you. Would any of you like to, would one of you like to talk regarding this? I think I have a letter from, maybe from both of you, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm not in that world, so I'd like to differ slightly myself.
Okay, three minutes. Come on up. If you'd be so kind, just give your name and your address.
Okay. Good evening, Council. I'm Rhonda J. DeChul. I live in North Platte, Nebraska. I'm in the first ward. I wrote a letter to the editor, and I'm going to read this letter. If I run out of time, I'm going to pass the round sheet. It said, and it was printed last Thursday, "I do not like the proposed location on Buffaloville Avenue for the microbrewery. The road is too dangerous. Put the microbrewery in the canyon if they want to view. We do not need that land resold to commercial. Resold the land by the river as agriculture instead of commercial. This will make the taxes cheaper. We need new businesses that not sell alcohol. North Platte has enough of those places with all the drugs and alcohol problems in North Platte. In my opinion, we need more retail stores and grocery stores. North Platte is a name game. As certain people want it, then we get it. This should be up for a vote at the whole town. Things should be told before in paper and on the news. I would not buy a house before the furniture, like they bought the equipment before the land. This is what I call bowling, in my opinion. Make a park with the newer money at Walker Road and Buffaloville Avenue. The city can pay for it. Yeah, people like all other parks in North Platte. The parks are one of our assets when people move to North Platte. We have beautiful parks. The parks are well taken care of. It should be, it would be nice to have a park out there with nice walking trails and bike trails. We already had a man on a bike killed on Walker Road. If there were a brewery on, and drinking, there would be more accidents. So, I'm close. We can put a brewery in the canyons if you want to view. We have a winery and an antique shop out there also. This is just my opinion. Safety comes first, just first, before alcohol, drugs, and cell phones when driving. Let's, let's put it in, shoot, before it happens to cost them one slide. Thank you very much for listening to me. I'm very against it. North Platte has enough alcohol. I've lost a lot of family members to this thing, and I drink occasionally, but we do not need this. You're going to have people coming in from the lake sometimes, and all over, and they're going to say, "Wow, we shouldn't do something about it." Let's do it before it happens. That's just my opinion, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Randy Ikey. I live at 4902 South Buffalo, which is like 300 feet south of the proposal. I have no problem with the new business coming into town. I don't think we need it out there. There's plenty of commercial land all around town that's not being used. It was also stated, I read where he said, "Well, that land is too expensive." That tells me somebody's overpricing all the land around town. For some reason, there is land on Walker Road by the highway that's more suited, I feel. All around Menards is all commercial. You have out on East Bypass, it's commercial. You have access to the interstate on both of them routes. You're not going to have one on Buffalo. And it's like Mr. Baker stated, there's no shoulders on, on any of the roads, Eugene, Walker, or State Farm. That's going to see increased truck traffic. So, you need to look at that as an expense in the future, widening them roads, making them stand up better to highway traffic. You have a bike path out there, which is fine. A lot of people walk it, ride it. Although, there's a lot of bikers with their high-speed bikes that don't ride. The bike, it's five mile an hour. They're out on the highway, out on the road, out on Buffalo. And they're, or though that death was on State Farm, not Walker, but that's a side point. I think you're just asking more trouble. I see later on here, and I did see where Mr. Guy heard that you're going to give some land in the industrial park, which I'm all for. But why can't these, they say the land's too high. That's industrial park is designed, I thought, for industry, businesses, and what we have out there is storage units. Is that what they're going to do eventually on Buffalo, is just commercialize it all, put up storage units out there too, because there's no way to get a bunch of traffic back and forth there safely? And I just feel that, you know, there's better places for it. Now, a lot of other people, he's got a lot of phone calls, and that, for people in town. It's not in their neighborhood, which is like on A Street, when they wanted to put a, a long, or a sun mart, whatever it was, a gas station, a fun mart, whatever. Everybody there had a fit, and they listened to them. But it's like, you know, just because we live out there, we have no say on what it is. It's all the people in town that say, "Oh, yeah, let's have a brewery." And I'm just, I'm very much against it. Not the brewery, but just the location.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak in support of, maybe one or two? Yes, please.
I will. I'm Sue Johnson, 1121 Sheridan Court. And we've traveled quite a bit, and a lot of the newer thing is going on, the cities to find the breweries, because they're fun places. Families are there. There's plenty of people around it, condominiums, places. It's, it's a fun place to go. And here, this, these people are coming for free and coming, not asking for any tax money at all, and coming and putting something in our North Platte system where we're going to get free tax money. It contributes to the city coffers, then provides jobs. It's there, a lot of times, very generous to charities, increases tourism. I work at the wineries, so I know what the tourism is like. And they come to the breweries and the wineries. That's what they come for, and those are good people. They're not the trash of the town. They're very good people, and that's what they will seek, because that's what they want. Many communities off the tax breaks, and, and we don't have to do that. We have, we have one that will pay for itself. And in the other areas where the garages are, or all that, other items, that is not a good place to have a brewery. We want it to be in a place that's a fun place, and the traffic is not going to be horrible. Those trucks are already out there anyway. And I agree with the last man, we do need shoulders on some of those roads. But I think we would be a fool to tell these people, "No, they can't come," because North Platte needs the business. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kurt Nadler, 1013 23rd Street, Gothenburg. Guess my best thing, I was very disappointed when I read the paper the other day that said this was even coming to a third and final vote. That's the first that I saw that. And I told my wife, what a, what a missed opportunity this would be for North Platte to not let something like this come in. We're the same way as the gal before me. We've been to a lot of these microbreweries. They're upper-class establishments. And I'm agreeing too, that the trucks are already out there, the trash trucks. We're not going to be needing more trash trucks to haul away from one, one business and stuff. So, I just think that, you know, you guys have missed the boat, because if you don't put it in, two miles down the road, it's a short time, you're going to have a microbrewery here, because it's just a trend, and that's, you know, it's, it's the way of the times. It's good stuff. It's not, it's not a trashy place. I've never been in one yet. It's, it's your old dive bar. These places are, they say, upper-class establishments. They're, you may say they're not needed, but they're good for us. We enjoy it. We would travel to North Platte. We've been to Broken Bow. We've been to Carney. It would be nice to be able to leave home in an evening and come up. It's a different type of, it's not, it's not your going out and getting sloshed type of place. Hang out till one morning, see how much you can drink. This is an enjoyment. It's a different quality of taste and stuff, and it's just a whole, whole new ballgame. And I think you guys need it here.
Thank you, Kurt. Thank you. Okay, any councilperson have any questions of anyone? Just want to add, Mark, that's for Mark, that's for Mark.
Okay, sure.
Mark, can you address that for me?
Mark Adiger, Hershey, Nebraska. These are typically done by the DEQ and regulated by the state. So I brought Brent, our engineer, who designed everything, so a professional can speak about that.
That'd be great. My name is Brent Berkland with TC Engineering. I'm a professional engineer, and I've been working with Mark on this project. He asked me to just provide some, I guess, an overview, a quick overview of the process, specifically the two issues of the storm water runoff and also the onsite septic system. The, as far as the sequence goes, those issues are addressed with regulation and ordinances. And it usually comes up, the place that it comes up is in a permitting process. The, and that's after the zoning. When you're going through the building permit or through the onsite septic system, the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality has Title 123, which is the regulations that govern all onsite wastewater facilities. So, this facility will have to go through that same process. Once the, um, the location is 100% set, then the design will be completed on that system. I visited with Mark Bauer, who is the section supervisor on the onsite wastewater, and just asked him some questions on microbreweries, and as other people have mentioned, they're in other rural settings, can cater, is in a rural setting. There's other places that have them. They've already worked through the onsite wastewater issues. So there's, from a big picture review, we looked at it from a feasibility and discussed options. So there's options that the state has looked at. And that's something that we go through a permit process within the DEQ, and they'd have to review and approve any onsite wastewater. And as far as the storm water goes, there's ordinances and regulations, again, on the state level, that when you go through the construction permitting process, that's where those regulations take effect. And you have to meet conditions and requirements of those particular items. So, I mean, that's from a design standpoint, that those review and the permits then take into effect. And they're viewed more highly from that standpoint than at the zoning. There's a whole set of ordinances and regulations that the state has created to deal with those exact issues. Anybody have any questions on?
I have no question, but it's only going to tie it back into you, because I want to ask you, what are our city ordinances on that wastewater runoff and things like that that he's referencing? That'll come up next.
I probably can't, I probably can't reference them right off the top of my head, but they are going to be required to do a SWIP, through the Storm Water Management Plan, that they'll have to submit to the city, due to the size of the acreage there. So, we have to do that. And so, yeah, I mean, the storm is going to be covered. A professional engineer is taking care of it, and then the city reviews it. A professional engineer is taking care of it, and then the city reviews it.
Thank you.
So you'll be one of the owners?
You know, I think that what remarkable thing, and I think I've noticed about this, these are business tenures without people coming in and asking for a ton of handout money, what I call handouts, or distribution of a bunch of tax dollars. Well, people here are ready to finance this thing on their own, and I assume that there's no, there's no plan to come in and ask for tax dollars as the process goes along. Would that be an accurate statement? The other thing I thought was interesting is that this thing has generated a lot of interest, a ton of interest. And I see that as a good thing. You know, 30 or 40 or 50 letters of people who care enough about their community and care enough about this issue to weigh in on it. And from the get-go, I was in favor of going all three readings on this, because I think that's important, that we let everybody that wants to weigh in on a deal like this to have an opportunity to do that. And I think that perhaps this might be a wake-up call for others waiting in line to accomplish similar endeavors, to don't take this process as a rubber stamp process. I heard our entrepreneur say that, or it's my understanding, that a bunch of money was spent before anything was approved, and it was working a hardship because he wanted to start up right away. Wanted us to go one reading on this, so he could get this underway faster. And I think it's unfortunate that people assume that everything's going to be smooth, and everything's going to go bang, bang, bang for them, but perhaps that's not the case. There's a reason for this process. There's a reason for three readings. And many of you here, I think, have an appreciation for that. I think it's a good thing, and I think it's a good thing to see so many people that are interested in what their government is about doing. So thank you for being here and for caring about your community, whichever way you feel about this.
Motion passes. Item number seven, third reading in action to adopt ordinance number 3949 to rezone certain property from an A1 Transitional Agricultural District to an RL Suburban Residential District located at 2421 West State Farm Road on property in the southeast one-fourth of Section 18, Township 13 North, range 30 west of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska. An ordinance of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, rezoning land situated in North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska as follows. Rezoning from A1 Transitional Agricultural District to RL Suburban Residential, part of Track B, Correction of Major's Replat, in the east one half of Section 18, Township 13 North, range 30 west of the 6th PM, all in Lincoln County, Nebraska. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
I approve W8 adopt ordinance number 3949, rezone certain property from an A1 Transitional Agricultural District to an RL Suburban Residential District located at 2421 West State Farm Road on property in the southeast section of 18, Township 13 North, range 30 west of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Good. Item passes. Item number eight, action on ordinance number 3951 to create sanitary sewer connection district number 18 along Halligan Drive from Lot 3 of Iron Eagle, third replat to Track 4 of Iron Eagle subdivision, thence, thence north end along the south, north side of North Platte Community College, and along Iron Eagle Drive in the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. An ordinance creating sanitary sewer connection district number 18 within and without the corporate limits of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, establishing the outer boundaries of the districts, designating the size, location, and terminal points, and referring to plans and specifications and estimates of the city engineer in connection therewith on file with the city clerk.
There's a, I would like to make a motion, suspended rules require three separate reads on ordinance number 3951, and I have, my question is, why are we being asked on this one to suspend it?
Was there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Tom Moore, below the city engineer. The reason we were asked is that there's been a petition signed by all the abutting property owners, Pattersons, Glenn Chase family, and Mid Plains Community College. This line will permit us to service development in the area, and also to accommodate the, the school and remove an existing lift station that's active on the north side of the, of the school. Been in service for a long time, since about 1979, and we'd like to remove that from service and get it out of there. So we'd really, all the affected property owners on one side have been contacted. The other side, of course, is the interstate, and we are the other, as a city, are the other property owners. So the people that want it have already petitioned and asked that it be waived. The developer would let, has to occupy his building by November 1st, and it has to be serviceable. And part of the service of that building is to have sewer service. And we will be tight on time, the way it is, to get it instructed. We'd like to have time to get some decent bids. We will be a pretty big part of the connection district in terms of cost. So the quicker we can do this, the quicker that we can get a good price, give the contractors time to get it done.
Two, two questions for you. First one is, I'm trying to remember exactly where this is going in, and is it going to be affected by, I know we've had problems with, you know, water during flooding times here down in this area, especially along, you know, some old channels, you know, with excess water, things like that. Is this going to be, you know, something that we've planned for?
Yes, we've been watching the river, of course, the river has now dropped. And the sewer in this instance isn't very deep. It does originate at the entrance of the golf course, Iron Eagle Golf Course, goes around the curve along Halligan Drive on the north side, sees west to the very west end of Glenn Chase's property, which is the east side of the college. There's an existing easement already there that we're going to occupy. Goes north towards the maintenance buildings for Iron Eagle, and then goes west to service the college. We do have one other property owner, Mr. Hayler, who's indicated an interest in it, or we have not received a response back from him, that he would be someone that we could provide for along the way without having to service, provide service to him at this point in time. The big players in this are the Glenn Chase people, the Pattersons, and the college, because all of them are abutting this sewer, and all of them would like to get it, get it done. And Tom, I would just reiterate what you said before, that this would allow us to eliminate future expense on having to go in there and repair that lift station. So in my opinion, this is a win-win situation, you know, the city as well. That's right. I agree with that.
Same part was, you said that everybody in this area has signed on to this? There's no abstentions out there or anything like that?
No, there have not been.
No negative comments?
The Hayler property I referenced is property that we could service if they desire us to do that. It can be serviced later as well, but we can't take the lift station offline behind the college without having a sign in place. And the college agreed with that and signed a petition accordingly. So did Glenn Chase, and so did John E. Patterson. They're the only ones really affected by it, so it seemed reasonable to us to wait the three readings.
One question, you said, when you're talking about costs, you said that the city was going to be a substantial part of it.
Yes.
What are we talking about, like 75, 25, 80, 20?
About half, roughly, a little less than half, because we are on the south side by the interstate would be, would be ours in any case.
Okay.
And then when we turn and go north, we have two halves there.
All right, well, this, you know, once this new sewer's put in, is this going to service the south side of Halligan there, between Halligan and the interstate? Like, you know, the quints there, or is there anything else going in?
Yeah, there's sewer already that runs along Halligan from the entrance, the golf course all the way east. That's already serviced. Actually, that's what we'll be counting.
Sort of tied into there and to the college.
Exactly.
So we're basically connecting the dots.
Right.
All right.
Yeah, that's right.
An ordinance creating a connection district does require six votes in your case.
Now make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3951 to create sanitary sewer connection district number 18 along Halligan Drive from Lot 3 of Iron Eagle, third replat, Track 4 of Iron Eagle subdivision, thence north and along the north side of North Platte Community College, and along Iron Eagle Drive in the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
What happened? My screen's blank. Oh, there you go. That passes 71. Just prior to that, there was a six to one vote, and I believe that was for the suspension of the three readings. It went by so quick, we didn't get to talk about that. So the prior one, six to one, was for the three readings to suspend. This one, obviously, is approved, so 7-0. Thank you.
I can maybe hold on. If we just wait until everybody's out, I'll be sure.
Okay, item number nine, action on ordinance number 3952, authorize mayor to execute deed to Michael D. and Lori S. Guire, convey Lot 1, Lot 1, Industrial Park 6th replat of Lot 2, Industrial Park 5th replat being a part of Section 3, Township 13 North, range 30 west of the 6th PM, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, directing and authorizing the conveyance of a certain described tract of land for and in consideration of the amount of money as specified, and providing for the manner of said conveyance.
I have a question, I'll flip on this. Is there, is this a three reading that we're on, first reading of, or is this a, just a, we need to pass it and get it on with?
You can't make a motion to suspend or require three readings.
The reason I asked, because stuff like this has come up on this area before, so...
Otherwise, it will come back next time.
So this is the first one, first time it's been on here?
Okay.
Has there been any indication that they were on it and suspended or anything?
You're contractually obligated at this point. You had probably the last council meeting entered into an agreement.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. That's what I was thinking, okay. 3952. This is her. Suspend the rules on board, December 39, 52.
That motion passes six to one.
Now make it. To authorize the mayor to execute deed to Michael D. and Lori S. Guire, convey Lot 1, Lot 1, Industrial Park 6th replat of Lot 2, Industrial Park 5th replat, being a part of Section 3 Township 13 North, range 30 west of the 6th PM, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
This has already been agreed upon quite a while ago anyway, wasn't it?
Yes, yes. Motion passes 7-0. Item number 10, consider using New Bern funds for improvements at Centennial Park Baseball Fields.
Did you come up with any numbers yet?
There's some numbers. Watch it out in front of you. I see Mr. Gustafson sitting in the back of the room there. I'm sure that he can answer any questions, which might have them. Come on up, Gus.
What was the question? Sorry?
I think there was one yet.
Not yet.
Okay. Just wanted to get you up here.
Okay. I'll ask them real quick. Okay.
I'll make a Western trip up here, even though you should have kept the Royals hat on.
Okay. I know.
No. Question here is, I know you've been working on raising money, and you've raised, it says here, 87,006.39. And I know you came and talked to us, you said Nebraska National Bank. Do you have any solid numbers yet from Mid Nebraska Community Foundation, Lincoln County Visitors Bureau, private donations in excess or above? These numbers you presented before?
No, those people are going to meet here just...
One minute, please, before we get, before you answer, would you be so kind as to give us your name and address?
John Gustafson, 2110 Alpha Street, North Platte.
Thank you, go ahead.
I go by Gus, so...
Yes, indeed.
No, we, they meet in the middle of July, so we'll know in a couple of weeks what we should be getting from them people. They said we'd have to wait that long till we found out, so...
Have you gone out to local businesses, you know, like hardware stores, things like that, and asked for in-kind donations? Have they given responses?
I have, I have, the suppliers, we're going to build this, and they said they'd be willing to do it once they get the okay. So like I said, I don't have those numbers together yet till we really know.
Because see, here's, here's my dilemma, thinking about this, is without knowing how much we're actually contributing, you know, in either hard dollars or, you know, soft money, you know, one way or the other, it's, it's hard for me to figure out, you know, do you need all of the New Bern funds? Do you know how to make this project? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I'd like all of them, actually, so it'd be nice. Maybe for the parks?
Not going to happen.
I know, but just for the parks. I just, after tonight, I just left from there, so...
But I guess the reason that they're back here tonight is, you know, you can turn exactly what you said into around and say, okay, if the council is willing to obligate X number of dollars in the New Bern fund, then that gives us an opportunity to work with these gentlemen to see what we may need to come up with as far as parks money when we come around and talk to them.
Yeah.
So you're going by this back sheet on here, saying we have roughly 87,000 cumulative available. That's our interests, you know, we're allowed to spend. And we have another project also in the works right now or in discussion that might be maybe someday needed.
Other than the fact that when that, are you talking about the other gentleman that was here on the decision?
Yes.
You know, at that point, the only thing he was asking us for was the use of the land.
Yeah, I understand that. But I mean, I don't want to, hey, we'll give you 87,000, and then something deterred that, you know, five grand away. I mean, if we were to put a cap on this, say we give them 50% of the available and put a cap, that for right now, I'd be comfortable with that, you know, not knowing hard numbers. I mean, then we're only giving, you know, guaranteeing, hey, we'll give you 40, 43.5, which is, you know, some of your bigger donations that you've had on here, and to be addressed later. I mean, I'd be okay with that if everybody...
Anybody else?
Go to 50%. That's motion.
You know...
Well, let's talk a little bit.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
Is there anyone else?
I know, at one time, and probably just you and I had discussed it, but does the city come up with some too, besides the New Bern funds?
Yes. What I have been visiting with these gentlemen is, is that, you know, at first, this was presented to the council several years ago. And over that time period, you know, they have come up with the money that they're showing you on here, and still a few question marks. But in my opinion, what we could do is, if the council would give us a number, then we could sit down and work with these gentlemen to come up with the remainder through the parks budget, and relying on the fact, again, that they haven't actually quit, but as Gus said, you know, there's several of these entities that are meeting in social life, but they want to be able to be in a position to see this thing built as you.
Well, I think if we gave them a hard number to go to these other locations with, of, hey, the city's willing to give us, boom.
Right, I agree.
That would help them break out their checkbooks a little bit, I think. Rather than going, well, we don't know what the city's gonna give us. I mean, we would, as I said, we can, you know, make a deal with fifty percent available if everybody was comfortable with that.
I'd make a suggestion of forty thousand dollars. You can always give them more.
Yeah.
I'd rather, I'd rather see that figure higher of the last budget.
Well, I don't think
Mary, go both ways. Well, yeah, and, I mean, to agree with both of them, if we went to forty thousand now and come next year with a new budget, we'd be like, well, instead of budgeting it, let's take some more New Bern Funds. It's not set in stone that we have to give only forty thousand.
Right, and, and, you know, in visiting with these gentlemen too, how the timing of project, you know, what you're suggesting there would, would fit right into that.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause we're gonna budget in one October, so.
But I said forty thousand.
How many projects are we looking at in the next?
Well, that's what I'm thinking of, Larry.
Pardon?
You know darn well, if we give them forty grand, there's gonna be somebody else in there.
Everybody else is gonna want to do it. That's right.
That's what I'm thinking.
That's why I didn't want to go more than fifty.
Only fair.
You're a good guy, but I don't know if you were at eighty-seven grand.
Well, that's why I said no more than fifty percent, which would be like forty-three.
We got three different projects coming up? But, well, we only have one on the boards right now. And that's There may be another one. Who knows? So we got forty, forty-three, I heard fifty somewhere.
Fifty percent is what it said.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent of available.
That's, makes sense to me. Fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent?
It's available, yeah. Okay, oh, so move.
Okay, we're at fifty percent of whatever that number is. Of the interest available. Right, right, about eighty-seven, forty-three.
Would that be listed here? None, when?
There was a, one second.
The question on that, though, that not fifty percent of what it is today, fifty percent of at the time of project? In case this increases? Okay. That's what I wanna see, it just goes off.
So we'll say forty-five.
Forty-five?
Over forty-five thousand?
Okay. Is there?
All the drama, do you withdraw your second?
No, he seconded.
All the draw, the motion's
Okay, forty-five thousand, was there a motion for forty-five thousand? And one second. All right, it's forty-five thousand and seconded now. If there's any additional discussion with regards to that, Larry, did you wanna? I think that's a little long. I, I like the forty better. Forty thousand. Well, there's already a motion for forty-five thousand and seconded.
You're gonna announce already?
Sure.
What was your vote? We'll change it later.
Nobody vote, but I'm gonna have to clear it more.
Okay. Hey, you had, you had a motion.
Yeah, both over now.
Let's see the vote on the motion.
Let's go ahead and vote on the motion, it's forty. Forty-five thousand.
The motion's been withdrawn. I think I heard the motion withdrawn.
Would you wanna change it to forty?
I make a motion that we approve forty thousand dollars out of the New Bern Funds towards the baseball project.
Second.
Forty, four.
Four zero.
Forty thousand.
And we got a second.
Yeah.
You got forty grand, Gus.
Thank you. Larry.
Okay, uh, is there anyone else? Item number eleven, cleaners.
No, yeah. That's for you guys.
Second?
That's your souvenir.
Do you know what?
No, it's on my paper.
I talked to him.